Call the meeting to order at 5:30. Make sure your mics are muted.
I'm going to call the meeting to order at 5:30 on the 14th of April. This is a, in a roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Claudia Bruna.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Bruna.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here. Ms. Smith, would you like to lead us in the pledge, please?
Everyone stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First of all, do we have any public communications regarding our closed session? No one on, none, okay? In that case, Madam Clerk, would you read our action for item, for our closed meeting, please?
Recession to closed session. Item 2A, conference with legal counsel existing litigation. The closed session is authorized by the Government Code Section 54956.91. Name of case, S Y Valley Residents Association versus City of Solvang et al., case number 25CB01519. Item 2B, conference with labor negotiators. The closed session is authorized by the Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency representative Randy Murphy, City Manager, employee organization, all unrepresented employees. Item number 2C, conference with labor negotiator. The closed session is authorized by the Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency designated representative Dave Fleischman, Assistant City Attorney, employee organization Teamsters Union, Local 986.
Thank you very much. We will now recess to closed session.
I know, because he said, "Turn your microphone on," and it wasn't on, so.
(Laughter).
Okay, I think we're good to go. Okay, I want to call our meeting to order at 6:32. And this is for our regular meeting of April 14, 2025. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonte.
Here.
Mayor Protema Claudia Rona.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our sheriff, our new sheriff fellow, Travis Henderson, is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so please silence your cell phones and remove your headgear.
(Inaudible)
Much appreciated. Okay. Is there, is there, there's not an emergency thing? Okay. Makes it simple. We don't rehearse. We have some proclamations, and it's a pleasure to do this. The first one is for DMV Donate Life Month proclamation. And I'll read this out. I think there's a Scott Burns here today that'll receive this. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion for those in need, and more than 103,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 23,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities, and a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can give up to eight lives, and whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, organ donors saved more than 46,000 lives last year, and any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions. And whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency, and California residents can sign up with a Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, www.dunvidaCalifornia.org. And whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California DMV, or residents interested in saving life through giving kidney donation may visit www.LivingDonationCalifornia.org. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor David Brown, along with the City Council of the City of Solvang, California, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as DMV Donate Life Month. And in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online or when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card at the DMV. And witness here thereof, I have unto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the City of Solvang, California, to be affixed this 14th day of April 2025. And I will say that I do have one of those little pink dots on my driver's license that says, "If I don't need it, take it," you know?
A plane crashed every week with 118 people. It would make national news. This doesn't really seem to make the news, but we really need to have more people look and be an organ donor. There are some good news coming up in Santa Barbara County. We now have a regional office. The company handles organ donations locally, is called One Legacy. They have an office in Carpenteria. Last week, I was in Santa Maria, giving a presentation, and then afterwards, we went to Marion Hospital and talked to some of the nurses. So they have staff there working with hospitals, so that's very good. The other thing at the DMV, which most of you guys may know, the office in Santa Maria, which has always been small, is getting enlarged with a new office, starting probably in August. So I do want to thank you all for this proclamation. It'll end up at the runwalk at the end of the month in LA, with other proclamations from other cities, all promoting organ donation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is for National Library Week, April 6 through the 12th. So we just celebrated that. Whereas libraries ignite creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning by providing spaces where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and expand their horizons. And whereas libraries serve as dynamic community hubs, offering free and equitable access to books, technology, and educational programs, while fostering civic engagement and critical thinking. And whereas libraries strengthen communities by partnering with schools, businesses, and organizations to maximize resources, enhance efficiency, and expand access to essential services. And whereas libraries empower individuals by supporting job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learning with valuable resources, training, and opportunities for personal and professional growth. And whereas libraries uphold intellectual freedom, championing the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, while dedicated librarians and staff provide welcoming spaces for discovery, collaboration, and creativity. I therefore now be it resolved that I, Mayor David Brown, along with the City Council of the City of Solvang, California, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6 to the 12th as National Library Week, and encourage all residents to visit our public library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways that the library draws us together as a community. Is there a person here to accept this? And please come up to the podium. What's your name?
My name is Erin Herzog, and I'm your Solvang librarian. Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. I'll be really brief, but just thank you all for your support. This is a wonderful community to work in, and the library is here for you. I hope you take advantage of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to item three, Public Communications, Non-A agenda Items and Consent. Would you like to read that, Madam Clerk?
At this time, you may address the council on items not on the agenda and on consent. Time limit is three minutes. We will start with in-person public comments first.
Okay, first I have Ellen Albertini.
I will forgive you. It's Albertoni. That's okay.
Well, you really are getting particular, aren't you?
Hey, I've lived with it for 65 years.
Okay.
I'm up here this evening just briefly to thank all of the city council members, our wonderful mayors and staff, for actually, for allowing us the extra time, the flexibility in your schedules to allow us to operate as best as we can as a solving senior center out of the Legion Wing. And I want to report to you, because of your efforts to meet our needs and our time goal, Mondays through Thursdays, February through April 10th, I'm so glad it's done, we finished up with our tax season. So two days a week, we saw approximately 30 to 32 folks that we helped free tax service. We filed successfully this year 425 tax returns, which is pretty stinking awesome. And so it means we probably helped about 650 to 700 individuals with a free tax returns. Seniors, young people, it's the first time they've done their taxes on their own. This morning, I had people knocking on the door saying, "Are you still doing them?" But without this good partnership, we wouldn't have been able to do that this year, because it was a little bit of a struggle getting everything set up this year, and we're so thankful. We've already dialed in with the Parks and Rec Department through 2026. Our calendar will be basically the same, and our dinner nights, and all of our activities. And we're very thankful to Jenny and Elisa, and especially Jonathan Flynn. He's been our knight in shining armor of helping us with some of our transitions. So I just would like to thank you all very much, and to invite you on the 26th of April to our Rise of Guild. It's not a traditional time for Rise of Guild. It's 10 to 12, but it's going to be wonderful, and a next big, major hurdle that we've crossed in this new spectacular building that you've supported us. Thank you.
Thank you. On deck, next is Matthew Clint Orr.
Mayor Brown, council members. When I'm arrested, I'm called Matthew. That's a little joke, okay? But, yeah. The point is, is I started the San Inez Valley Nonprofit Center, so I've already filed the DVA and advertised it in the San Inez Valley News. So it's going to be at one of a couple of different locations. I'm looking at 3099 Mission Road, which is the Santa Cota Motel. I've known the owner for about five years. I'm looking to make it into affordable housing, and take the front barn and make it the headquarters of the San Inez Valley Nonprofit Center. Hey, pretty good idea, right? Come on. And there's eight nonprofits that I'm working on. The California Country Dance Foundation, that's my baby. I teach dance. I'll be teaching dance at the Veterans Hall in Solvang. That's it, on Wednesday nights, starting pretty quick. And I'm starting the Santa Barbara Livestock Fire Break. That's behind the mountains here. I'm going to put a two-mile-wide fire break with livestock and so on to prevent fire. And I've also got an affordable housing gig and a few other things, but I won't bore you with that. You'll see it as it comes along, because it'll be in the papers and all. And I do have one complaint. I'm a simple guy, and I, you've closed off the stream at the store there for no reason, and that makes me nervous. Putting up those walls, the water doesn't get up above like that far, and you've blocked the access to the public, and now there's homeless people hanging out there and stuff. That should not be there. You should remove it, okay? Whoever made that decision, just go up and then clear out, because the reason that it flooded was because of the blockage of the tunnel, not because we're living in this place where the dams are breaking. There's nothing coming down there, really, of substance. So we don't need to have walls there that block public access. I really disagree with that. So hopefully you guys can get those things down and say, "Everything's cool," you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other public comment online in the audience? Okay, we'll move on to item four, City Manager's Report and Advanced Calendar. Mr. Murphy.
Hi, good evening. First of all, I'd like to invite or introduce our new Chief of Police Services, Travis Henderson. And if anybody isn't aware, he's the father of our mayor for a day from last year, Finley. And we also have Brad Welch, and I'm sorry, I don't remember what your title is, but if you both want to come up here and introduce and say a few things. Mark Valencia retired, and so Travis is now here as our new chief.
Well, Mr. Mayor and council members, it's my honor to take this position on. I am a lieutenant with the Sheriff's Office, but in my role, in my rank, being lieutenant, my job is the chief of police services, unlike Chief Brad Welch, whose rank and job is chief with our agency, is the chief of our law enforcement branch. So he is the highest-ranking member of our law enforcement branch, up into the under-shepherd and sheriff. But I'll reiterate, I'm honored to take this position on after Lieutenant Valencia has retired. I tell people, I didn't necessarily get to pick where I went, but if I got to, this is where I was hoping to go in my lieutenant role. I'm a resident of the valley, and I have roots here. I'm glad to come back. I think there's nothing more fitting than being the small-town police chief of where you live, when it comes to being able to have an impact on the community. So thank you all for this. I look forward to continuing our partnership with the City of Solvang as your contract police, and it's not lost on me, the responsibility I have. But with that, I'll turn the mic over to Chief Brad Welch.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We're just really excited to have Travis up here. I've personally and professionally known Travis for the past two decades, and I can't think of a better person and lieutenant and human to work alongside the City of Solvang. We're really excited for all the great things he's going to do with all of you and your city. Like he said, he does have roots here. I think it's important for our law enforcement staff up here in the City of Solvang to have that connection to the city where they police. So congratulations to Travis on his assignment, and congratulations to the City of Solvang for getting Travis, because I think you're going to be very happy.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
I have a few other things quickly. For those of you who didn't know, we were in a contest on USA Today, and we were voted by our readers, and hopefully a lot of our residents and visitors, the best small town in the West. So for this year, we'll get these nice little, I mean, this isn't one of the buttons, but it's, it'll be in some of our advertising, it'll be posted on, probably at the visitor's center and other places. We got fifth place on Best Food Scene in the West, or Best Small Town Food Scene, or something like that. And there was a third one, but I think we were a little further out on the rankings. But a bragging point, obviously, and it shows that people like coming here. Also, our transit, Santa Inez Valley Transit, is having to do some re-timing of their schedule because the Bulton Library is now open, and so they're going to, they have a stop in front of the library. And so they'll be doing a new timing. The route schedule will change a little bit. I believe it'll be effective the first week of May. So we'll be doing some advertising and publishing that information. And as far as the advanced calendar, let me grab that real quick. We have, we'll be talking about fee study or fee schedule at the next meeting, a couple of more proclamations, and quarterly public records request report, quarterly marketing update, that'll be at the next meeting. Upcoming, not long after that, we'll be awarding an IT in the information technology, RFP, and a whole lot of other stuff coming on. So, and that's all I have for now. And pardon me for being a little distracted, running on fumes. Some of you know, my daughter got married in Key West on Saturday, and I flew in, my plane was late. I didn't actually get home from LA until, I had hit the pill about 3:15 this morning, and I got up a quarter to seven, and I'm lucky to remember my name right now. And I also found out that I've been asked, I've been getting an award from the Solvang Sunrise Rotary, so they want me there at 7:00 tomorrow, so I won't even get to sleep yet. So, Murphy's Law.
Any questions for the manager?
How was the wedding? Good wedding?
Congratulations. Okay. Next is item five. Madam Clerk, would you read that for us, please?
Government Code Section 53232.3D, aka AB 1234, and Government Section 84308, aka SB 1439, report out ex parte communications, council comments, and requests.
Any comments, or Mr. Abonte?
Just real quick, little woodworking over the weekend to get some parts made to rebuild the windmill and then Dolly Parton house. And the guy that's taking care of all of that ultimately is going to want to put a sign up and give us a little bit of marketing recognition at Dolly Parton's old house. That's it. Thank you.
Oh, well, I was going to go super formal. I just wanted to report out that I attended a workshop that was held in this council chambers on the 31st, which was the wildfire awareness workshop. It was very well-attended, and obviously a hot topic, but a lot of great resource speakers who, I think, shared some learnings about what to do to be prepared, how to respond in situations of emergency, what resources are available to the community at large in the valley. And I just wanted to point out that the workshop was recorded, and I believe there's a link available, so you can replay it if you happen to miss it. And then, being a hot topic, I was asked to participate in the mobile parks' own effort to become a firewise community, and so they held a community meeting last Sunday. And so perhaps we'll have two neighborhoods, very quickly in Solvang, on the path or already certified for firewise status. I'm so happy to see everybody take that seriously.
Thank you. Awesome. Go back this way.
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
I'm afraid I have way too much. I just wanted to say I attended the Community Wildfire Safety Program on the 31st, so I want to thank council member Elizabeth Arona for organizing that, hosting that, and for Joan Hartman being here. I thought it was incredible, very informative, some wonderful speakers, and I'm really looking forward to next steps. Very excited about that. I also want to say that I attended the Frozen Junior Show at the Solvang School. It was fantastic. We have some great talent with our young folks here, so I'm looking forward to more of those shows. I also went to the Peasants Feast, I always want to say Pheasants Peast, but Peasants Feast. who I think shared some learnings about what to do to be prepared, how to respond in situations of emergency, what resources are available to the community at large in the valley. And I just wanted to point out that the workshop was recorded and I believe there's a link available, so you can replay it if you happen to miss it. And then being a hot topic, I was asked to participate in the mobile parks' own effort to become a firewise community and so they held a community meeting last Sunday. And so perhaps we'll have two neighborhoods very quickly in Solvang on the path or already certified for firewise status. I'm so happy to see everybody take that seriously.
Thank you. Awesome. Go back this way.
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
I'm afraid I have way too much. I just wanted to say I attended the Community Wildfire Safety Program on the 31st, so I want to thank council member Elizabeth Arona for organizing that, hosting that, and for Joan Hartman being here. I thought it was incredible, very informative, some wonderful speakers, and I'm really looking forward to next steps. Very excited about that. I also want to say that I attended the Frozen Junior Show at the Solvang School. It was fantastic. We have some great talent with our young folks here, so I'm looking forward to more of those shows. I also went to the Peasants Feast, I always want to say Pheasants Peast, so, but Peasants Feast, their five-year anniversary block party, which was very well attended. It was nice, it was good to see the community come out. It was super windy and very cold, so fortunately somebody was selling scarves, so I did spend some money. That was great. And then along with Mayor Brown and City Clerk Porter and our Planning Manager Castillo, I toured the Diablo Canyon Power Plant. And I have to say I was absolutely amazed. Disclosure, my brother worked there in the late 90s and early 2000s and retired 20 years ago, went on to do other things. But he was always telling me all these wonderful stories about how safe it is and the security and just how amazing it is, so I actually got to see that firsthand. And our City Clerk Porter was asking many, many good questions. We actually went out on a boat and we sort of saw the intake pond and then the output flow, just incredible, the cleanliness, the security, what we had to go through to get through it. And I learned that PG&E, the CEO is a woman and the two top senior vice presidents at Diablo Canyon are women. We actually got to sit down and have lunch with Maureen Zowalich, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing her last name correctly. She's a VP of Business and Technology Services. She's been with PG&E for over 30 years. She remembers my brother, which was a little embarrassing. They have 1,200 regular employees. When they're doing like a shutdown and maintenance, they have up to 3,500 employees. It's a city. I mean, it was really incredible to see what they're doing and I didn't realize how regulated all the uranium is. I mean, they can account for every pellet, every ounce, every, everything. And the backup systems that they have, it was, it was really an incredible experience and I'd love to go back again because I have more questions and I would encourage anybody to do it. You do have to go through like a pre-screening, so, sorry, am I getting dinged here like I've spoke too long? But anyway, it was a wonderful opportunity, so I'll be quiet now.
Are they opening public tours now? Did they open it to the public?
You can.
Yeah, you can, but you have to go through the whole pre-screening and everything. And I do want to do a shout out to Eric Daniels, who was our tour guide. He was amazing. I mean, so knowledgeable and answered all of our questions, so it was, it was really an incredible treat, so.
It was, it was a delight being out there and, yeah, the security, it's easier to get on Vandenberg Air Force Base than to get through Diablo, but well worthwhile. I've got a couple of things I'd like to bring up. I want to thank the staff, they've got together now and they've got these little QR codes that you'll see throughout. QR codes is like our Google review, so if you've had a good experience, a bad experience, just something to report, you can go on the QR code and grade any, any activity or any interaction with any of our city staff, and that includes ourselves. If there's feedback, please give us a review. I accept five-star reviews all the time and I highly, you know, anyway, it's good to have this and get your feedback on how we're doing in our staff. Keep in mind, we're in the service business and so we want to be of service. So, number one, and thank you to Olivia for making that happen. Again, I already had the press reach out to me about the best small town in the West and, well, I guess if you read the article, you'll know that I said, now you know why Denmark wants to buy California, right? We're the best there is. So, and then I was on, Friday, last Friday was an elected leaders forum for homelessness and they gave an overview of the state funding and affordable housing for going forward. It's still very unknown, if you will, with federal grants and things of that nature with DOGE and other entities weighing in. So it was very, it was very difficult to plan or make plans as to what will be available for the homeless programs, but they're doing a good job with what they do have. I wanted to thank Jennifer regarding, Jennifer or Cabrillo?
Cabrillo.
Cabrillo. She instigated some door hangers for the fire preparedness and so those door hangers are going out in both Spanish and English throughout the community for people to look and see those QR code on there as well for fire prevention. And I appreciate that extra effort and coming up with those ideas. I wanted, I also had a board meeting that I attended with the Chamber of Commerce, the Solvang Chamber of Commerce, had a good dialogue with them and how we can enhance our business relations and tourism in Solvang. And then the Diablo Canyon Power Plant was on my list of things. And I'd like to add something to the future calendar, if I may. We've talked about it off and on, but regarding the terms for our advisory people for DRC and planning and Measure U, there, I'd like to see those become two-year terms, alternating with nominations from even districts on even years and odd districts for odd years. And see if we can't get that on the calendar all these days and have a discussion on that.
That's in the plan, so you're already working on that.
Tally ho. When's it on the calendar?
We've talked about it internally, it's going to be, it'll be coming soon.
Something along those lines, as far as two years with, and nominations from the district for that representative every other year.
Does it measure a few, already started that way?
But not the others, so I'm trying to get them consistent in some fashion, so.
We'll bring up proposals, yeah.
After 12 months' time and then it's, there's no consistency.
Well, they are two-year terms, but they run with it every two years. And what we're talking about internally is doing it concurrent with the elected person district. So it'll be four years for each of the council and maybe two for the mayor's position and then they would roll. That's what, we'll bring some options, but that's kind of what I think we've been talking about.
Okay. To be continued.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, great. All right, we'll move on.
I had a couple of things real quick I forgot to mention. The discussion about the fire mitigation being a hot topic, no pun intended, reminded me, we are, we have crews from California Conservation Corps doing some work at Hans Christian Anderson Park, clearing some of the brush. They were out there a couple of weeks ago, they're out there this week, and I think they're coming back for three different, not for the whole week, but for two or three, four days in the week. Very inexpensive for us to be able to retain them and they're doing great work. The other thing I wanted to mention, the gentleman who was here talking about the work in the creek and the, that's county flood control, that's not the city, so, just to anybody had any concerns about that, but I will see what's going on.
Randy, there was a question about, he's referring to, I assume he's referring to the K rails that are still up behind Creek Lee and into the river.
Yeah, perhaps.
Okay, so that is not city, I didn't think that was city word, but, okay.
Anything else? Otherwise we'll move on. Let's go to item six. Madam Clerk, would you read that for us, please?
Consent is for routine administrative city matters and is approved with one motion. These items are discussed only on request of council members. Members of the public were afforded an opportunity to speak during the public communications portion of this agenda.
Thank you. Is there any issues with any of the items A through F? Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept all consent items A through F.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded for item six, A through F as approval. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Claudia Arona?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item seven, no public hearings, okay? That's quick. Item eight, discussion items. Let's go through, you want to read for number eight, A?
Discussion on possible action to adopt Resolution Number 251286 initiating, excuse me, initiating intention of the annual assessment for the Solvang Mesa Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number 2004-1 for fiscal year '25 through '26 and setting May 12, 2025 as the date for the public hearing.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Hello, as Anna Marie said, this is for the Solvang Mesa Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District and the engineering report that we had Francisco and Associates perform for the LLMD. As part of their tentative vesting map, they were required to establish an LLMD for the development and so they did that in 2004. And with that is a requirement that that assessments be set each year based on the previous year's budget. And so this year, what we have in the staff report is the engineering report from Francisco and Associates and the budget that was established. For the budget itself, we have authorization to do a maximum of 5% annually, but also the LLMD has had historically low assessments needed for the project itself, so in theory we could charge up to $3,600 per parcel for that. But just with the frugality of the projects that they've had under the LLMD, there wasn't that much activity and so we're only needing to raise the assessment 3% for this year for the residents and so that will be $1,429.66 per parcel. So it's a significant difference from the $3,600, I guess, that they could pull out, but the LLMD itself has plenty of reserves in there and looks good for this year. So as part of this, we have a resolution for next year's budget and we're also asking to set this for a public hearing for May 12th. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a procedural question then, so if there's a public hearing to be scheduled, but we're adopting a resolution now to accept what your recommendation is, it feels out of sequence.
This is actually the Prop 218 process for an assessment district, so you, tonight you're approving the report, you're not actually approving the assessment, you'll hold the public hearing, find out if there's protest to that assessment and then adopt the assessment.
Okay, because there's a resolution in the packet, I just want to make sure, okay.
This resolution approves the report and sets the public hearing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, then I'll take it, any public comment that exists? I don't have any slips. Anybody on Zoom? Okay, we'll close public comment. And back to council, any motions to approve this report?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-1286.
It's been moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Claudia Arona?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to item 8B. Could you read that, please?
Discussion on possible action to adopt Resolution Number 251287 to approve Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee Guidelines.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Hi, good evening again. So.
Do you need a Red Bull or something before we start?
Yeah. Any coffee? So, yeah, this is, we've got three different separate agenda items tonight, all related to Major U Committee and a few modifications that either the committee or staff is requesting. So the first one is to, Major U Committee formed as a result of the Major U, the ordinance, consists of five members and they're very active and passionate about what they're doing. And they came up with a set of guidelines that they wanted to present to council to help staff in the budgeting process and being consistent with the will of the voters. Obviously, they're the representatives of the community and they've got some excellent ideas. So this first item is a discussion related to those guidelines. They made a recommendation of some things and so there's a red line or blue line, I guess in some cases, or even purple, what do you know? And it shows that, so the colored words are different than what the committee actually approved in their more recent meeting. The changes were recommended by city attorney and/or myself based on some input from the city attorney. So, and I know that the Chair, Jeff Urema, is here and he has some things he wants to Because it's a committee thing, it shouldn't be timed, so take as much time as you need, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
I won't take very long. My name is Jeff Urema, I'm privileged to chair the Measure U Committee. We have four other members on the committee, three of whom are here tonight, Jamie Baker, Henry Hauzy, and Frank Smithson. The other member is Adilia Cahoe. As you know, just to make sure everybody remembers about us, our role has been to vet the city plans for Measure U expenditures, provide independent oversight, and ensure consistency with the voters' expectations when they pass the measure. We're proud of our contributions to the subject because of, it helps create a culture of accountable performance and governance. I want to thank the committee members for their commitment to this cause and the excellent work they've contributed over the last year. And on behalf of the committee, I would also like to thank the staff for their support and willingness to respond positively to the committee's very serious commitment to ensuring voter expectations are upheld. As you may recall, we came before you last November to describe our plans to hold a workshop and with excellent support from the staff, we did as we promised on January 28th. We were pleased with the public turnout, which included members of this council, so we thank you for coming. We had two items on our agenda for the workshop. One was to learn from staff and the public what the city's needs are in each of the categories of city services that are named in the Measure U ballot materials. We were very pleased that we got excellent input, which you will see later in the budget recommendations that we made at that, during the workshop, that'll come, surface during the budget stuff. The second agenda item in our workshop was to review and recommend the guidelines to govern future Measure U expenditures. And those are the guidelines that you have before you today. Yes, the acting city attorney did make a couple of changes to what we approved. While I received advance notice of these changes, the committee as a whole did not and has not discussed them. In my personal view, the changes are not substantive. I don't think there's any problem with making them, with one possible exception, and that's the insert to question four. These guidelines were intended to be for Measure U, but the city attorney inserted language commenting on the, how to use expenditures for Measure E. We haven't discussed that, we look forward to discussing that should you decide in your wisdom to give us jurisdiction over Measure E in one of your agenda items tonight. So you're welcome to approve it as it is or strike that language. We will comment on what we believe the voter intentions were in passing Measure E and bring that, and provide comments on that either way. The. The, let's see, what else? So we're happy to answer any questions that you have about the guidelines that you have in front of us, and we were asked for our willingness, our interest in taking authority for reviewing Measure E, and if you do decide to do that tonight, we're very happy to serve in that function as well.
I had one thing I wanted to add in response to this comment about item four. I anticipated that that would be the direction, you can see by the other resolutions on here. So rather than have to bring it back and amend it, and again, based on the recommendation of city attorney, I added the language that said, "include Measure E."
Let me have that crystal ball that you have. Go ahead. Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, in this case, the comment was added into this item four, it says Measure E was intended to offset the impax tourism, but we're not saying anything about them taking over Measure E in this particular set of guidelines. It's just you deferred them away from a particular revenue stream to this. All right, that's good, thank you.
Yeah, but Measure E didn't exist when Measure U was established, so that's part of it. Now, now it's time to consolidate the two of them, perhaps.
It makes total sense to us.
That's, but what we're, what we're discussing here today is these guidelines with what you wish to operate within.
Right. And if you have any questions about those guidelines, we drafted those, and we'd be happy to comment on them or just give you any further background that you would like to have.
I just have one question, because I, the comment, I think, is around item number four, what was the intent for Measure E? And is it directed at a specific part of our budget or associated with specifically tourism? It's a question. I don't remember what the language was for Measure.
The language was almost exactly the same, and there were a couple of nuanced differences, but for the most part, it was the same. Talked about law enforcement and fire prevention and road maintenance, and there were two or three other things.
Right, there's a lot of similarities, but there also is potentially some language in there that might give us an ability to be more flexible with Measure E toward, because what the guideline number four says is, we ask the question, should measure revenues be spent primarily for services benefiting residents as opposed to supporting tourism? And the answer that we gave is, our sense is that Measure U generally was intended to prioritize expending revenues for the benefit of residents. We do believe that that was what Measure U was for. There may be some language in Measure E to be determined that gives us a little bit more flexibility to spend it for, more for, for the benefit of tourism. But we haven't taken a position on that yet, and so there is a possibility for that nuance. But my recommendation is that you give us the opportunity to come, to give you some feedback on that after we've had a chance to review it with the same kind of analytical approach that we've taken for Measure U.
And just to clarify, this is not an argument on either side, I'm just clarifying the language. The Measure E language did refer to offsetting the impacts of tourism, not necessarily benefiting tourism. So I think that's the reason that this language came out the way that it did. I don't, I don't want it to be portrayed as Measure E is sort of benefiting tourism, the language was actually offsetting the impacts of tourism.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, because here, I'm going to state, maybe overstate the obvious, but I would, we already have general fund dollars dedicated to things like marketing and promoting solving, which I think is the opposite of the impact intended for Measure E money. It was meant to be, to deliver and augment, or at least provide funding for services that the residents don't get to experience because of the burdens on some of those services from tourism and visitors from outside the community.
With the logic being that the visitors from outside the community are paying the tax.
Yes, because specifically TOT, but we already have TOT dollars being earmarked specifically for things like marketing.
But he was an increase.
So I would make sure we're in agreement that that language is clear, or we're okay, or that we can still have enough flexibility with what we're going to vote on, that the committee can still come back and make a recommendation.
Again, just to share my thought process, again, having been to all the committee meetings and knowing the conversation, I felt pretty confident that the direction was that they definitely wanted some oversight and some input into how the Major E monies are spent. Just wanted to provide that differentiation in the fact that Measure U was, again, intended, as they said, per-residence benefit, and Measure E would then help offset the cost of it. So I'm, I'm trying to, trying to cut down on workload for everybody, and the idea is that if we have language in here that says we're making a difference, Measure U is one thing, and Measure E is, can be used for that too, but it also is more directed at tourism, then we don't have to come back with another document that says we want, we want to do that. So that's really all I was doing, and trying to streamline the process a little bit.
The resolution refers to this, so they're combined, as a section or an amendment? It's a section, it's a section. Okay.
And also, you're not adopting something that is etched in stone, like an ordinance?
Yeah.
If the committee has a particular, I mean, the committee's done a very productive work, in my opinion, to present this document to you, if they have a different take on it
Down the road, yeah.
Down the road, then it can be.
Which is, in fact, I can relate to that, because as a new council member coming into some of this, some of the language is what gives you, you know, reading historic resolutions or ordinances is what gives you indication of what was the intent, you know, when these things were put in place, and so you, you know, I look very closely at that language to understand what was the motivators, what were the, what was the intent, and are we living up to that? So if you cast into the future and someone else is interpreting, new groups entirely, interpreting the language, will it be clear? That's, I want to make sure.
Hopefully.
I want to make clear, I'm not objecting to the language being in here, all I just want to do is make clear that it's not our work product. We haven't really formally addressed Measure E because we had no authority on Measure E until, unless and until you give it to us tonight. So that's all.
If there's no other questions, we'll go to public comment. Any public comments here locally or on the Zoom channel? Okay, I don't see any, so we'll bring it back to the board. Any other comments? First of all, I'll comment a little bit, but Jeff, Jamie, Frank, thank you very much. It's invaluable, the advisory services that you guys provide for us, very much appreciated. And, but at the end of the day, we still have to make the hard decisions. We appreciate that advice, but we're still under our control. But that good advice sure makes it a lot easier, thank you.
Well, I wanted to comment on that, too, because I think two great things are coming from this Measure U Committee is an approach, a framework for how to make the recommendations, but also a framework from the community to provide, you know, diligent oversight, which is, meets, meets the voters' intent, and I think that's important, so appreciate that you all stepped up for that. Thank you very much.
Okay. If, if there are none, I would go ahead and make a motion to approve eight B.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item eight C. Staff report, please.
Want to introduce it first?
Would you be so kind?
Discussion on possible action to adopt resolution 251288, granting advisory oversight of Measure E revenue to the Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee.
So now, staff report. So continuing the discussion, this resolution is actually granting advisory oversight to the Major U Committee to look at Measure E funds and provide those recommendations as well. As we discussed in the last item, there are some nuanced differences between the two revenue sources and their guidance. It's, it's clear they understand that, and it just, again, this is formalizing that process. So I don't know, Jeff, if you have anything you want to say about it, or we just, okay. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Actually, I think it's a pretty good idea, pulling it all together and streamlining, and in as much as they're already helping with the budget and things of that nature, it's just a natural merger. So, but let's ask if there's any, any public comment, I'll open it for public comment right now. Anybody in the meeting room? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. We are now closed for public comment. Any other discussions? Anybody up here? Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 252287, no, 88, sorry. Advisory oversight, Measure E revenue for the Measure U Citizens Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, would you confirm that motion, please? I think the, I heard the number differently. It should be adopt resolution number 251288. Right? Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item eight D. Would you read that into the record, please?
Discussion on possible action to adopt resolution number 251289, renaming the Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee to the Revenue Measure Oversight Committee.
Thank you. Staff report.
So part three of three tonight, this, now that you've authorized the, you know, provided the direction to have the Measure U Committee provide oversight to the Major E revenue, that now comes the concern that there might be confusion because it's more than just Measure U. So after thinking about it, we landed on Revenue Measure Oversight Committee because this allows any future revenue measures. Unfortunately, I know people don't want to hear this, we will eventually have to come back and ask for more money at some point, hopefully not for a long time, but at some point. So the idea would be that we wouldn't have to come back and get another name if we said Measure EU or UE Committee, and then we had another letter somewhere down the road.
EIO.
Yeah, EIO, the old McDonald's, no. So this is, you know, giving it a name, came up with Revenue Measure Oversight, ARMAC, kind of T-MAC for tourism marketing, so it's kind of a little thing there, but, so this is asking to change the name so that we, and we have to go to the formal process, and at some point, we will come back, and because this is in code, right? So we'll have to come back with an ordinance update, and that's a resolution giving direction to staff to come back and do that, so that we change the name in the ordinance as well. And I can answer questions.
Did we, did we consider the EOC, like the OC? RMOC or the?
That's one of your options, you come up with another name.
Any comments? Any questions? Let's open it up for public comment, if there's any. Any, anybody in the room? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, we are closed for public comment, and we'll bring it back to the council for discussion and/or a motion. Any volunteers?
Everybody's good with the name, RMOC? Okay, good. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 25-1289, renaming Measure U Committee to the RMOC.
I will second.
Just to clarify, it's combining the both measures, so it'll be plural measures, EU and E, or E and U.
Thank you, yeah. The dream team.
The dream team's been taken, yeah.
AKA the dream team.
Very well. It's been moved and seconded properly, roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Are there any closing comments by any board members?
I was just going to say, it's 7:33, so Randy, hopefully you can get some sleep.
I'll be able to get some sleep tonight, hopefully.
I want to thank everybody, I want to wish everybody a happy Easter, and thank you, we'll see you in two weeks.
A hoppy Easter.
7:38.